It's called to order this the Monday, June 14th, 2021, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Sorry. Chief Kornman is not here. Who would like to do the pledge? There you go, Marshall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marshall?
Our God, we come before you this evening, and we thank you so much. This little town. We thank you for the benefits and the blessings you bestowed on it. Just be with us tonight, lead and guide our conversations, our thoughts. Let our board members make the decisions that are proper and right for the town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes for the regular meeting, May 24th, 2021.
I'll move to approve minutes.
Second.
That's okay.
Motion to second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
Make a motion to do action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
I'll second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Ellisville Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Thurman, luncheon with Governor Holcomb on August 31st, 2021.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. The Chamber, I'm Jill Thurman from the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber has exciting news on August 31st. We will be hosting a governor's luncheon. Governor Eric Holcomb will be addressing the business community through an interview format with questions selected by the Chamber. We would like to extend an invitation for you to submit questions or topics for questions that would be most important from an Ellisville leadership perspective. We would also love for you to attend this event, and you can reach me by email with your questions, your topics, or to attend. And I've left my business card in front of you there, so you have my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or comments about that before we move on? Moving on to resolutions. Tonight, the only resolution on the docket is Resolution 14-2021, a transfer of funds from police fleet insurance and town hall maintenance.
Well, whenever we paid our second half of the insurance, we found that we were a little short on the police side. So that's what the transfer is on the police, and that's for $5,231.80. And then the, there's some maintenance we would like to do to town hall, some painting and just some general catch-up things. We've been here almost four years now, and so we're transferring some money from the town manager's salary down to town hall maintenance.
Okay. Questions, comments about this resolution?
Sandy, where's the police fleet insurance money coming from?
Uniforms and gear.
And was this just something, was insurance higher than expected, or did we?
Well, we changed insurance this year, and it definitely went up, but the police department got hit a little more than we had realized it was going to. I mean, we did budgets last July or so, and then we don't, we didn't change insurance until January. So it kind of leaves us, you know, in a bad spot sometimes, but they had had a consistent budget for three or four years. And so it was, it was a surprise for us that it came in.
$20,000 bump annually.
Yeah, right. Is this going to put you guys short, though, in the uniforms?
Well, Sandy's pretty good at working with me. We'll get through it. We have another category. We're getting a little thin in, too.
I didn't know if we had to have a thing where we all sew and patch together.
We might be able to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, Sandy works pretty well.
You don't want to volunteer me.
Where are we at with fuel, that line?
Fuel is right on the line, right, right there. We're maybe just a little to the plus.
We probably won't do any transfers out of food.
No, not this year.
No, 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 I want to make sure we had enough so the gas is ready.
Yeah, I made a fortune out of last year. I did. I mean, we were able to do a lot of things with the fuel money last year, but we won't be able to do this year, so.
I'd like to revisit that topic later, if you guys remind me. So on the resolution, other questions or comments? Sorry, I kind of took us off track there.
No.
Okay, it's an internal resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 14-2021, transfer of funds, police fleet insurance and town hall maintenance.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
For the general public, there are no warnings on first reading, second reading. There is no old business. There is no flood report. Under new business tonight, the first item is 2021 Review of Tax Abatements for Kehi Real Estate and Personal Property.
This is an annual commitment, and they submitted their forms timely to the auditor. And so the auditor's office said that we need to confirm that they're in compliance. And so I, they gave me a little sample to use. I made a little, it's not a resolution, it's just a form for you to sign, for me to send to the auditor. And then on the back of each of the statement of benefits, yes, second page requires the council's, town council president's signature and a couple of questions there to answer. And Darla, if you have anything to add, I'd be.
I don't, well, I guess I do, sorry. If the town council is going to deny the request for compliance, in other words, if the council is going to find that the property owner has not substantially complied with the statement of benefits, the town needs to explain the determination and also needs to designate a hearing date so that the property owner can come and discuss the issue at a public hearing, so.
They did make their payment to the town last year, so.
What other requirements did they have?
There was some employment requirements, maybe, or just some goals and.
Have they met them?
It has on the front page there. If you look at their statement of benefits for Kehi, they estimated it on the SB 1 at, like, the current number of employees, they said was 165, when it was actually 199. The salaries, they estimated at $38,000, and they're actually $45,911. The number of employees retained was 165 estimate, it's actually 137. And then there's another salary, and the actual came in quite a bit higher, was 38, came in at 51. And the number of additional employees, they estimated at 60, and it's actually been 62. So to, for the employment piece of it, I think they are in compliance. Do you agree, Darla, or?
I would.
Do you have anything to add, Kevin?
No, I think their estimates were based on pre-COVID numbers, and I think they've been well to keep it as close as they can.
I've got a question on the number of employees retained. Now, if they've only retained 137 employees, they've got 199 employees, current number. How, I, explain that to me.
Was that not from the transfer from where they were at a different location to, the number of employees retained? They retained 137 from their previous location to when they moved up here, is how I took that.
Okay, I just want to confirm, because the current number of employees that they came, they said would be once, if that and the number of employees retained were the same, but the actuals are different.
Right.
So if, it sounds like they hired more employees than they thought. I just want to confirm that's the case.
That would, that's how it kind of looks to me, but I'm kind of saying about you.
Kevin, do you have any information on that?
I don't, but I believe they didn't retain as many as they expected to. Their hiring's on track, and I know they're trying to hire more, get back.
Yeah, and their salaries are up there, so don't take this to me thinking, my gut's not saying they're out of compliance. I was just.
No, I just, yeah.
Because, I mean, they're actually doing better than.
And I think their goal was to add to 16 additional jobs over several years, so they're probably ahead of where they thought they would be.
They are signing the forms under the penalties for perjury, so.
Right.
I mean, I see no reason to deny it, even if.
Oh, I don't either.
They're off track, just because COVID has kind of put a hurt on everybody.
Well, they're, to me, my, it doesn't look like they're substantially off track at all. And really, the only things that they fell short on is the number of employees retained and the salaries of the additional employees. But the salaries of the retained employees are so much higher.
Right.
And the same with the current number of employees. I don't think that really, I mean, that comes out in the wash, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Other questions?
It's a good job to keep.
Comments? Town manager, anyone? Do you have any comments concerning this?
No.
Okay, seeing this is a public document, are there any public comments concerning the tax abatement continuing for Kehi?
It also includes the one for the property.
Right.
So there's two of them.
See no one with questions, either in the audience and/or on Zoom. Back to the council for action.
Is the, would the motion just need to be to reaffirm their, I mean, is, because we've already proved the abatement, what, how would we form, how would the motion be stated?
I think we're confirming they're in compliance with, on both employment and our personal property and real property, correct?
Right.
All right. I'll make a motion that Kehi is in compliance with personal property and real property for their abatement.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy?
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager. Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Department of Public Works, Street Division, pending vacancy of the street commissioner position.
I think Pam asked for this to be on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Obviously, we have someone leaving the street department, and so I wanted to talk about having Kip Hedy to replace.
Okay.
I think he's got the experience, he's been there for years, and so I would like to see him, if possible, put in it.
Questions or comments from council?
I would concur with Pam.
When did Danny retire?
Not till July 1st.
July 1st?
That's his last working day.
Was this the plan that we were going to replace his position?
Well, we've been talking about it for several months, and we've had meetings between the utility staff and the street department staff. And this is a plan that I would support as well, that Kip take over as street commissioner. And he's a really good help. He's knowledgeable in everything we need done as it relates to the street department. And I just think for, for the future, you know, he's part of the succession plan to make sure we have people, good people, running our departments in the future. So I support that you appoint him as the street commissioner after Danny's gone.
I think I would also concur with what Mike said, and Pam, and William. I've known Kip for quite a while, and he's done a pretty decent job ever since I've been on the council, probably close to 20 years now.
20th year.
Yep, you've done an excellent job, and you've also worked with the fire department. You kind of covered all your, or all the bases, what we needed you to cover, so.
He was a reserve police officer one time.
Oh, really? I did not know that.
Jack of all trades.
He's definitely homegrown. And, you know, it's really nice that our, our town supports promotions from within. So this is just another example of.
Let's not forget all the nights of Fall Festival, either. Or the early mornings, in case maybe. I agree with all of them, Kip. I think you're very well aware of what I personally think of you. You've done a tremendous job over the years. You and your crews and Danny have just, quite frankly, knocked it out of the park year after year after year. And if anyone doubts that, I would encourage you, the next time it snows, to go look outside and look at your roads in town as compared to other places that you may choose to drive, and.
Look at the accidents we had. We have zero accidents on those eight, 10, 12-inch snow period down. They had them cleaned before we had any problems whatsoever, so.
Yeah, I agree completely, and that's, that's due to men like Kip, like Danny, who make sure that they go right over the years due to the leadership that Mike puts forth and all the town employees. But I, I concur. I think the succession plan is, is absolute, and I think it's a much-needed thing.
Congratulations, Kip. You've got all of our full support, so.
Well, I guess the question there, do you mind us doing a motion tonight to take care of it?
No, I think that would be great, and.
Effective on Danny's retirement?
Bringing it up, yeah, because it's going to be a little crazy around July 4th, and so we don't have a meeting until the 12th or something like that, so this is appropriate.
So would this go into effect July 2nd?
July 2nd, he's our employee, so it's just.
Okay.
I mean, I want to make sure that we got the couple of weeks that Danny can pass on the knowledge that he has in the last 20 years, so.
Probably have to buy some new shirts.
Probably. Get the keys a different truck, maybe a taller truck. So is there a motion concerning promotion of Mr. Hedy?
You say July 2nd?
Effective on the retirement of the current street commissioner.
I make a motion that we put Kip Hedy in as the Department of Public Works in the Street Division as the commissioner position on July the 2nd, pending the retirement of.
Danny Stocker.
Yeah, Danny Stocker, I forgot his name.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy?
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Kip.
Thank you very much.
Kip, we did ask if you wanted the job, right?
Yeah.
You do know that means you have to go to the next meeting, right? That's, that's a tradition. We just started, but that's a tradition.
Is Danny planning on coming to one of the, there's only, what, one more meeting or two?
I think he's going to come to the next meeting, because I'm going to be at Mineral County Fair Show and livestock that night.
Okay.
So that's next week, that, the next council meeting during the fair has been for years, so.
We just want to make sure that Danny understands the appreciation we have for everything he's done over the last.
Well, hopefully, he'll be at the next meeting. What is it, the June 20? 28th, I think. 28th meeting, I think. I think he said he was going to come to that one, so.
And we are going to have a little celebration, I'll send out emails for that.
Awesome.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Water emergency contingency plan, emergency operations and disaster planning in the event of groundwater contamination. Adam Hirschberger.
Thanks a lot for having me. My name is Adam Hirschberger. I'm here on behalf of Bynum Fanyo Utilities. First reason I'm here is just to introduce myself. I've been working more with Rick Kopick, one of our internal engineers. So moving forward, you may see some emails or communications come across your desk from me, and this way you can picture the guy who's bugging and pestering you. More importantly, the second reason I'm here is that water emergency contingency plan, and this is an EPA and state requirement. And it essentially is the town's master plan for responding to emergencies that would impact the drinking water system and public health. So very important. I believe Serena was able to email you all a copy. I don't know if you all had a chance to see it or if it's in your packet today, but I brought a hard copy just in case. But basically, it covers everything from natural disasters to, you know, flooding, tornadoes, contamination, whether it be intentional or accidental, from A to Z. It's a comprehensive plan, and basically, what I'm here to try to secure are signatures on the last page. They, they require, looks like four signatures. They like their signatures. And then what I'll do, once it's signed, doesn't necessarily have, have to be today. I can, I can get it later and take care of submitting it to IDIM. I'll also then get a hard copy to Brian Miller to keep on file, and that'll keep us in compliance with state and federal guidelines. And obviously, important to have that in place for the town, so if you have had a chance to look at and have any questions, I'm happy to discuss it with you. Otherwise, feel free, as you have time to do so, and we'll get signatures, however you prefer.
When did you send the plan?
Would have been last, early last week.
I am really sorry, but we didn't receive it.
Oh, that's okay. I can resend it. Like I said, I have a hard copy here, so maybe, maybe I should just send it for now, and you all can review it, and, or however you prefer to proceed, really.
Yeah, I think that we should do it the next time, because they don't have a copy of it, and so we don't have anything to even sign.
Well, we have to have one, and it has to be on file. We have to submit one, and we've always, you know, had, well, we've had one ever since I started asking for one. Adam updated it, so we can wait, but really, all we need is signatures, so they can review it and sign it later.
And we are, we are ahead of the curve. It's not due until December, just given the important nature of it. We thought it wise to take care of it sooner than later, but we are, we do have plenty of time, so that's not a problem.
I would prefer that it be placed on the next agenda.
So that everybody has a chance to look at it.
Sure.
And if you would direct it to me, I would appreciate that.
Go ahead, Lee.
I'm Clerk Treasure.
Okay.
At Ellisville, Dye, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so we will revisit that in a coming council meeting after we've all seen the plan and had a chance to look at it. Next on the agenda is Ellisville Chamber of Commerce, Dan Rary, Envision Ellisville Plan.
My name's Dan Rary, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Greater Ellisville Area Chamber of Commerce and Ellisville Main Street. And I'm also the fundraising chair for the Envision Ellisville project. And I just want to give you a very brief update on the project and the progress that's being made. After over a year in the planning stage, which included a nearly year-long delay because of the pandemic, we finally moved from the planning stage to the action stage. And on June 2nd, we had our kickoff event right here at town hall, and our project consultant, Taylor Seifer, and Williams Design Group met with over 20 members on our project team, including members of the Greater Ellisville Area Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, the town of Ellisville staff and board members, school staff, business and community leaders. The consulting team was given a brief history of the community and an overview of our community in general by Mike Kornman and Lisa Cisco. And then Kevin Tollata gave an overview of the town's comprehensive plan. We then loaded onto a bus, which was graciously provided to us by Cook Medical, and complete with a driver, and toured the area to familiarize the consultants with all the features of our community. The afternoon session reconvened at the chamber office, where we heard about Taylor Group's web and social media strategies. They also spoke about the branding and designing of the project. They will be collecting and analyzing data about our community and report back to us by the end of July. This past Friday, Envision Ellisville was a topic of the Chamber's monthly power luncheon, and we're having great success in our fundraising efforts, having raised over half of the $45,000 goal that we set for the project. I want to thank the town for allowing us to use the town hall and for allowing town officials to be part of this and to, and to work on this important community project, and for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Rary before he departs us?
Mike, did you, I think you answered one. Yeah, I would have a comment. So I put a card up on your, in front of you, and this is one of the cards we use when we are soliciting funds from some of the local businesses, community leaders, basically anybody we can that would be interested in donating money for this effort. And so I'm working with Dan on the fund committee to, to get this going. So I didn't know if the town could or would be interested in being a, you know, given a donation as well. And so I proposed that it be talked about, and then maybe if we can, then I think it would be a good idea. All the local businesses and major components of our, our community have so far given graciously, and I just think it might be good if we was part of that group.
Yeah, we're at about $30,000 now, and we also got a $30,000 grant from the community foundation. And so we're within $15,000 or $20,000 of our goal.
Yes, if they don't change it again.
They don't up it again?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Rary?
Yeah, can we kind of outline what the money will be used for? I mean, I'm on the committee, so I know. But just for the public, and also, you know, what's, what can we expect? What, what will you need us as a town council to do once this is finished? Because I know that you guys have been through this a couple of times, or at least once before, where you did kind of envisioning process. I can't remember the name of it, but when we talked about the history, something like this was done. And I don't think we really moved the ball like we should have. But what, what can we do as a town council, A, to help move the ball, and B, what can the money be needed for?
That was several years ago. I've lost track of how much time's gone by, maybe 20 years ago. And we didn't get any funding and really didn't pursue it that much. What we're going to do, we've hired this firm, this Taylor Seifer and Williams Design Group, and they have worked with numerous small towns in Indiana. I think, I don't remember what the figure was, but.
Hayley, Cory, Jeffersonville, Honeyberg, Fishers, there's some of the.
About 15 of them, I think. And done this same process and been very successful, and that, quite frankly, is why they were, they were hired. They had the experience. And what they'll do is they're going to conduct surveys with all the businesses and all, really, all the citizens that they can get a hold of. I mean, they'll have a mass survey that they'll send out and to see what people's interest is in our, in our town as far as trying to get more industry, more businesses, more housing projects, parks, trails, to see what people's interest is. And after, after they do that, that's the visioning process starts, and, and they will, they will have a plan that they give us. Now, whether we implement that plan or not is up to us, and quite frankly, up to the town also. But what we're going to come up with is this, this grand vision of what we want Ellisville to be. Part of it's branding, you know, what is Ellisville? Who is, who is Ellisville? And why are people coming to Ellisville? And we know they're coming. I mean, there, people are moving, residentially are moving here just left and right, and Michael's got all kinds of people wanting to come here with business and industry. So it's, it's a plan that they'll, that they'll help us, that they'll help us put together, but then it'll be up to us to implement it. And, and quite frankly, some of that will fall onto the town also. They're not here, or we're not here to tell anybody what to do, and we're not here to, to say, well, there's, things aren't right, and we need to do something better. Things are great here, and that's one of the reasons we're doing this. We think things are wonderful, and we just want to make it better for everybody. And we're getting a lot of new people in here, and see, see what they think about it. And I, we already know from, from some of the people we've talked to, that they like, they like parks, they like trails, they like beautification, all these things. And most of those things are already, already going on, already in progress.
If I may, Dan, so to respond to William's question, I think Envision Ellisville wants the board to partner and even take ownership of this effort, so it will be complete with all the other people involved, residents, business leaders, community leaders. And so we had a chamber meeting last Thursday, and, and that was the discussion, that they want the board to, to become directly involved. We have William, and Pam's been at a meeting or two, I can't remember, but we want the board to help us, help us get support from the rest of the community and spread the word. So we really need the board involved in this, because it'll only be as good as, as we make it. And the more people involved, and especially leaders, the more, well. And the more people involved, and especially leaders, the more, well, we will succeed. So I was going to say more chance we have to succeed, but we are going to succeed because there's not really another option for us. I mean, we can let the town become whatever it is, or we can make the town what we want it to be. So there's a lot of really good vibe about this. It's well constructed, this Taylor Group. They, I mean, they're focused on what we want. It won't be cookie cutter. It won't be everything that Paoli and all these other people got. This will be tailored to us, no pun intended. And so they have already a work plan that shows the next eight months, and, and you can almost follow what's going to happen. Surveys will be a big part of how we get the community involved. We'll probably put something on our water bill to try to reach out to everyone. So this is not going to be like anything we've ever done before. Town's got a new energy and it's, it's going to light up one way or the other, so.
When you look at what's going on with the town, just look at our corridor out here. We've got the, the new Hoosier Hills Credit Union. We've got a Starbucks now. Starbucks doesn't come to town unless they think it's up and coming. And all kinds of other businesses coming in. And there's a lot of excitement being generated by all this. And we just want to make sure that, that everybody's involved.
And I will say that Krista Curtis had talked to me. We, we have now, and I don't know if, I hope she's talked to you about this, Dan. But we, every county council meeting, town council meeting that we have, we have the flood report. We're going to have an Invision Ellisville report. So if you're not here and someone's not here, I can give it. You guys get me, you know, where we are with the process, so we're all in it. And also, if you could reconsider, I know it was rejected, but our slogan, Ellisville, we love pizza, I think would be great.
Let's say if we could find a couple more pizza restaurants, that'd be fantastic.
I'm trying to convince them.
We love pizza and storage.
Yes, I'm trying to convince, we have, we have to have the highest per capita ratio of pizza places in, in the, in the, in the state, probably in the country.
So what's wrong with that?
No, the absolute, pizza is, pizza has just been determined as the number one addictive food. There's nothing wrong with that. That's why I think we should promote it. People see pizza, they'll just str, they'll drive here for miles.
They have more pizza places per capita than police officers, first of all.
That's probably something we should not outline, but great point. Something we have to correct.
Did anyone see the new pizza place just came in?
Yep.
They're at the golf course.
Not open yet, but getting there.
No, it's coming.
It is.
We have new golf, golf course, Hoosier Put-Hole.
Yeah, it's got a good catchy title, just like the golf course does.
Somebody dared me to say that in official comments, and I just did, so.
Did you get pizza fort?
I don't get any pizza fort, no. That would be a bribe. I'm above that. Unless it's Diet Coke.
So let's talk just a little bit about donation. Sandy, I know we've long held a fund for, forgive me what it's called, basic promotion of the town. Yes, how much is in that?
Well, let me look that up. Mike, $3,000?
Yeah, it's not enough, but we do have some money left over for paying the town manager for his efforts for the town. So we got some money in there we could utilize. And so it's just by luck that this has happened. And so, but anyway, that would be a place we could garner some money.
Well, I think, if I can for the council, I think we at least need to be at the philanthropic level. Because I think this is such an important, for want of a better word, project for, for not only now, but for five, 10, 15 years from now. So I think we, we definitely need to be involved in that. And I think we can, I don't say worry about where it's coming from later, because there'll have to be transfers of funds. But I think there's several opportunities here to come up with that amount of funding, if the other council members see that.
What's the suggested amount?
About $5,000, unless somebody feels we need to go more than that. So.
I'm laughing, she's, she's grinning. So how much do you have to spare, Sandy?
Well, I guess.
There, I, I never call it money to spare.
Where would you like to see us, Mike?
Excess money. I think.
Yeah, we've always decided if you guys, if the board would, you know, would want to do this, that we can take the money out of the town managers, so.
Okay, so are you comfortable with $5,000?
That is available there. I'll have to do a transfer, another transfer. But I, you know, like, we do have a contract tonight for miscellaneous professional that's going to take a big chunk of that money, so.
Yeah, and although Darla could weigh in, I'm not so sure that this may not fall under the ARP plan, that we could potentially leverage some money out of that, because it is promotion of the town.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, at some point, then you can circle back around.
Right. Again, I think there's various avenues here where we could, we could see this through fairly easily, so.
So should we just kind of, you know, say that our goal is to do that?
I, I honestly, I'd like to commit to at least that level tonight.
Well, okay, we can commit, I should say we'll commit to it, we just have to find the funds for it.
Yeah.
And for the public thinking, this is not a waste. This is an investment into the town. We need this, because make no mistake, someone's going to determine what the vision of Ellisville is. And we're at a point where we either determine what it is, or we let people around us determine what it is. We're running out of time for that.
And it's going to dovetail well with some things we'll talk about here in just a few minutes. So I guess I'll be the one to make the motion that we commit to funding Invision Ellisville at a philanthropic level, which is $5,000.
I'll second.
When you have the opportunity, Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples? I normally have this all written out. I didn't do it on this one. Okay, so William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
And Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Mike, that feels a little out of order.
Do you have any men to practice? I mean, it's been a year since we've done this live.
No, no.
Okay. Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Yeah. Next is mowing service agreement between Town of Ellisville and Jason Scott.
That's you.
Okay, well, I reached out to Darla about, I don't know, Darla was about a week or so ago.
There's a copy of it.
And the Connor family had contacted me and said they were no longer interested in mowing the, the hay, hay ground behind the Bobcat here in Ellisville. So they said that they had somebody that they knew, that I actually knew also, that was interested in doing it. So he's wanting to do it. His name is Jason Scott. He's from this area. He kind of lives a little farther over in Owen County now, but he's wanting to try to cut it when the, well, we've got a few days now where it's starting to, the sun's shining and everybody's cutting hay. So he's wanting to try to do the agreement like the Connors, same agreement, I think. Is that correct, Darla?
It's the exact same agreement.
Yeah, same agreement is what we have with the Connors, for them to cut the property and for them to take the hay off of the property before cutting the property.
Okay. Questions from council? Comments from council? Is there a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the mowing service agreement between the Town of Ellisville and Jason Scott.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is fire department request to hire a part-time fireman. Saul Chief Korman up on Zoom there.
Where you got me? Whichever one you want.
Up to you. I don't know who want to talk to.
I think.
I, I kind of want to see if the Zoom works.
Do you? Well, he's hiding right now.
He's probably asleep, actually.
What we would, what we'd like to do is firefighter Ryland Klaus joined as an intern. Then he moved on to the volunteer rank. And now he's applied to transfer to a part-time position. And we would like to do that. Ryland has done the agility, physical interview process with the career staff, as well as the Board of Chief Officers. And we're recommending that we move him from the volunteer status to a part-time position. We are in need.
Okay. Questions from council? Is he going to be driving anything?
Not for a while.
Okay. Is there motions from council?
I make a motion to hire Ryan Klaus as a part-time fireman.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm confident the fire department has done a great job on plugging some of the holes that have come up. And you've just rolled with it, so thank you.
We have a very well-balanced group of firefighters, and they're all stepping up and filling the holes where they're at.
It's, it's been impressive.
They're hard to plug sometimes, but.
Yep.
How are we doing with the part-times right now? Are we getting enough then?
No. We're actively, you know, recruiting, trying to find, but the fire service, as well as, you know, you guys can attest, the, the law enforcement also is very difficult to find people to get into their careers right now. And everybody in the state's hiring, so we're competing against everybody. And it's, it's very challenging. So everybody's swapping people around, you know, so on, so we're struggling with it, but we're getting there.
Think maybe we should take some time and look over that and see if there's something we can do to maybe promote, to help bring in some help, or, I mean, how desperate. Well, that's true, but, I mean, I know we spoke several months ago. The, the situation was getting a little dire to say, from, you know, what you guys had explained to me. And I just, is it at that same level, or is it a little better, or?
Uh, staffing isn't any more than what it was when we met last time, but it's not gotten any worse. We are going to need to continue to try to find some additional personnel. And I'm not sure where that's going to lead just yet. You know, like I said, we've got to find more people that are wanting to work.
Yeah, and as Scott said, you know, budget time, which is coming around really soon. So I'd just like to ask the council to kind of think about this. And I know we've run some thoughts between us about how to recruit some firemen and policemen and things like that. So if the council would just kind of give it a, some thought when council, or when budget time comes, that we could sit down and discuss it and try to come up with a plan.
I agree. We need to be much more competitive than what we are. And unfortunately, again, for a lot of the, a lot of the people on the outside, and I hate to say it that way, all of a sudden, we've gotten into, for want of a better room, word, a bidding war for tenured firemen and tenured police officers. And COVID is partially to blame for that, as both the academies were closed. And there's not a lot of openings that were being filled at the time. And now it is literally a game of one-upsmanship between the towns and the cities to see who can recruit the both, the best, the brightest. And we're going to have to be in that playing field, so we're going to have to see some.
Already trained.
They're already trained, yes, because there's only a certain number of, of trained slots that are out there.
One of the areas that we've been finding that some of the gentlemen have left for was because of the retirement plan that the police officers and firefighters has. And Chief Korman's been working on possibly being able to change that over to the, what they call police and fireman's perf. I'm not sure if he has the report completed for you guys to review yet, but he is working on that. And we'll bring that to you, and we'll see where that goes. And hopefully that will help with some of the differences.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time you guys have put into that. I know it's a little scary at times.
We appreciate your support.
Yeah.
Anything else for the deputy chief? Thank you, Kevin. Do you want to talk about the, was it ARP before we get into the signed ordinance? Do you want to do signed ordinance first?
Well, good, yeah, I was going to do it during supervisor's comments. But I sent you all an email with a service agreement. I think Sandy printed out a hard copy for almost everyone. And so I think it's important, I've talked to Darla, and I've talked to Doug Baldisari, who works for Baker and Tilly, and of course, Sandy and I talk about it almost every day. But I think it's important that we put together, I wouldn't want to call it a committee, but just the professionals that, that take care of the Town of Ellisville. And along with Baker Tilly, who's our accountant and has been for decades. I think we need to put together a plan for how we're going to approach ARP money, what it's going to be used for. We probably need contingency plans. The fact that ARP isn't the only money out there, there's a lot of promise that that ARP money can be used to be matching funds for other grants that the state and the feds are floating around up in the air, and so we can double our money. Jeff and I had a, a meeting with an outside engineering firm last week, I believe. And, you know, they're working on plans for how to use this money. And you basically, you need a spreadsheet to keep track of all the grants and how they can be used, how they can be commingled. And we just think we need some professional help from the accountants to not only tell us how to use it, but to keep track of it and make sure that we are in compliance with the ARP rules. So far, it looks like nobody knows completely how these funds can be used. And they've already thrown, thrown a curveball on, for the townships. They're thinking about giving township some of this money now, and that might dilute the amount of money we get. So, you know, I don't think everything's completely settled from the feds coming our way. But I, I, I think we need a service agreement with our accountants specifically for this job. It's not unlike when they do rate, rate studies for our utilities. We've had the same kind of agreements with them before. So I just think it's important that we start having regular meetings, be prepared. I've got a folder full of projects that we could hopefully be shovel-ready, if you will, I hate to use that term, but be shovel-ready. And some of them have to do with parks, some of them have to do with trails, specifically the flooding. You know, there's a, of all the social aspects of the COVID and how it's impacted our, our community, there's plenty of avenues there to utilize some of that money to help some of our social services that we have in town. We can get in that later, maybe at a work session or something like that. But there are just a lot of moving parts. It's kind of over my head as far as I'm concerned. But I'd like to get really educated on it, and I'd like Darla and Sandy and Baker Tilly's support. I mean, I can't do it by myself, I'm pretty sure. I tried, but I, I think I want to succeed on this. We, we'd like to get some taxpayer money back in here and use it for what best fits what we need in the future.
And this is, I have, went to several little seminars on this. And I actually sent them out to you, the last two I took, I sent the little spreadsheets or presentations to you. And this money seems like it's going to be highly scrutinized. It's federal funds. They're going to really watch what it's spent for, and we will have to be very accountable for it. And so I welcome some professional assistance.
And currently, it seems that there's just, it's pretty restricted where we can use these. I mean, so it could be complicated if we decide to try to use it for some of the social aspects of how the COVID's impacted us. And then at the bottom of the list, you can do water and sewer projects. I'm not sure, it doesn't make any sense to me, but it's a failsafe if you can't figure out anything else. And that does impact our rate payers, and a lot of them, you know, don't want to see the rates go up. And I know a lot of board members don't, so, you know, you could use it for that. But I, I think we need to be prepared for moving target. I think, I think they'll open up more avenues for us to use this as we move forward. But anyway, I just think we need Baker Tilly's services. So I, I'd promote somebody going ahead and make that motion. Because we, depending on what you do tonight, we'd like to have our first meeting this Wednesday, and it will be at the Town Hall.
I would, I would agree that I think because of the complexity of this and the ability to make an. I would agree, that I think because of the complexity of this, and the ability to make an error that we didn't intend, I think we probably do need Baker Tilly to weigh in, and quite frankly, probably give us a list of options that, you know, this goes here, this goes here, this goes here, so that we can kind of match them up with your list, and any of the council members or any of the public may have, that, so that we're sure that we are not in error on any of our thinking, because I'd hate to promise money to something and only later have to pull the plug because we were wrong, or we were guessing.
Or worse, have to pay it back.
Or worse, have to pay it back, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the proposal says they're gonna develop a list of eligible uses and limitations, so they're gonna get it both, get it to us both ways, so...
Other comments from the council?
No, we can't vote on that tonight, can we?
Yeah, we can.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we can vote on it, because this is...
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry about it not being on agenda, but I got the proposal, I asked for it before this meeting, and it didn't come in until Friday.
This doesn't require a public hearing beyond this one. There's no special notes.
Mike, I apologize too. I didn't see the email, so can you tell me how much they're charging us, or do they know?
It's rare, the rates.
I'll let Darla speak to that.
Second page.
I'm letting you.
I understand.
That's...
Thanks, yes. They've got hourly rates separated out by job classification, so the partners and the principal directors are going to charge 240 to 500 an hour, managers 200 to 325, senior consultants 150 to 250, consultants 135 to 200, and interns 90 to 110. So, it's not like they gave us a, you know...
It's not to exceed.
It's not to exceed, and...
15,000, is it?
There you go.
So...
And then provide a copy of the...
Where would this money come from?
The fund itself.
Well, we got it in Ms. Lani's professional. We have it in our budget, and it could be that it can come out of the actual ARP funds when we receive them.
I asked a question, and he didn't give me the answer.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Are you sure we can take funds out from...
No, we are not sure.
No, we're not sure about anything, you know, with ARP.
Well, the first pass had consulting fees in regard to this project that was listed when the ARP first came out, so I just assumed that that continued forward, again, as the management of it.
Well, I, yeah, I kind of agree, but...
The bottom line is, we have it in a budgeted line item.
I've never seen a federal grant come out that didn't allow you management fees to be taken from that same fund.
Yeah, when we do rate studies and Baker Tilly's involved, it is rolled into the rates, so...
Again, we have it in one fund, if possible, we can take it out of there, but...
What fund do we have it in? I'm sorry.
It's in the general fund under Ms. Lani's professional.
And how much is left in that fund right now?
I think that that's got a $20,000 budget.
So, what do we normally use that? I mean, how much do we use...
They're using that for Red Topic Services when he was the MS4 operator, and he did things for the town too, both the civil site and the stormwater utility, and he no longer provides that service, so we don't have anything designated coming out of there. Those functions are covered by Kevin's department now, as far as stormwater, right?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm with Scott. I think there's a lot of moving parts to this ARP where it can get very cloudy very quick, and if we have Baker Tilly's assistance to kind of send us through the storm, I think we take full advantage of that.
I think it's our due diligence here to voice them.
And I think that they will help us on the other facets, the other grants that branch out of this. They'll be able to direct us into, you know, on which way to proceed, for if it's not covered in the actual ARP money, then help guide us out into a grant that would cover what we want.
Yeah, that's part of their, that was, that's in the proposal. It's to, it says, to evaluate additional funding streams and, you know, on the state and federal level, and so, they'll, I mean, they basically will be monitoring every day for us if there's a...
Darla, have you read this?
I have.
Okay. Go ahead, finish, Mike. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm done.
Well, I think...
I mean, this is just my opinion. I think Baker Tilly would be helpful, because one of the categories that you can use the ARP money for is to help recover the town's revenue losses, and there is a certain calculator that they wanted you to use to determine how you calculated your losses from either reduced income tax, reduced property tax, reduced utility user fees, all that kind of stuff, so I think that Baker Tilly could help immensely with putting together that for the town, so that you're coming up with an accurate total that will be acceptable to the feds for reimbursing yourself for revenue losses.
And do we know how much money is it now that they're still saying that we're gonna get?
Well, the original projection was 1.4 million, but that was, all that was, was a projection, and they have made it clear that it's really up to the state of Indiana how to distribute the money, and if they incorporate the townships, that's going to greatly reduce the amount that, the bigger cities, like the city of Bloomington, got direct payment from the federal government, but as smaller guys in towns, it's up to the state, so...
We're not an entitled town. They call them entitled and non-entitled.
I don't know why.
And what were you saying, Mike, that there was a deadline coming up or something? Did I hear you correct?
No, there's not a deadline. I mean, we have, we have plenty of time. Darla said that they went from two years to four years now, so in a timeframe where you can spend it and it has to be allocated, and so, we have plenty of time, but I don't want to be complacent at all with this. I just need to be first, then last.
Sure.
So, I want to be prepared more than anything.
And I really think that Baker Tilly or someone like this, if their services can come out of this money, they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna be able to figure that out pretty fast.
Oh, absolutely.
And I just worry about the pitfalls, that if we do it wrong, I think it's gonna cost us a lot more than paying Baker Tilly.
Town manager worries about it even more.
Well, one of the things the town has to do is if you decide to transfer funds to a not-for-profit or special purposes unit of the state or local government, you have to help the recipient track the funds. So, it's not like you can just give them the funds and say, you know, okay, you're on your own, report back to us. I think the town has an obligation to follow through and make sure they're using the money for what they're supposed to be doing. So, I think that's a whole different level of, I hate to use the word supervision, but just, you know, checking up, or...
Management.
Management, there we go, thank you.
You'd probably have to pay someone part-time to do something like that anyway.
Further comments? Is there a motion?
I won't make the motion. How do you want the motion, that we...
Just to approve the engagement letter between the town and Baker Tilly.
To approve the engagement letter between the town and Baker Tilly.
Second.
Motion second, Sandy please.
Darla?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Lee Melas?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mike, when are they going to take a look at this? Did they say they were gonna get started on it?
We're gonna get started one in the afternoon.
Did I say 2:00?
2:30.
All right.
We'll have our first meeting, if you're interested, be set in.
Welcome you to sit in.
Yeah, send me an email, make...
I'll do it.
Remind me of the time, or I'll forget.
And if you could search back in your emails, Baker Tilly did a demonstration or a presentation at the Clark-Treasure School through AIM, and it's, you know, just bullet points, and it's pretty quick reading.
Was it on the AIM website, the emails that they sent?
No, this is one I sent out to you after...
Yeah, Sandy's sent out, and they...
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a hard copy of it, too.
Oh, yeah, I have a hard copy, and I can resend it if you can't find it.
I'll find it.
But it really gets it into good details and the categories and...
Anything further? Seeing that, next on the agenda is a review of the sign ordinance. I asked for this to be put on there based upon some, I guess, questions, comments that we'd had concerning a sign at Kehe. I guess one of the questions I have, and Kevin, I'm sorry, some of these questions are gonna seem like they're directed at you, and they're not, but you're the one that's gonna hold the answers to it. So, one of the questions I have is, do we own a light meter?
No.
Okay. Well, that creates a problem, because we have a code here that specifically puts brightness levels not to exceed .5-foot candelas above the ambient light, but we have no way to measure this ordinance, and that, no way to measure that, thus, we have no way to enforce this ordinance, and that's part of the problem with the entire ordinance, as I see it, in the fact that a lot of these things are, quite frankly, seem like they've just been pulled out of thin air. Where we talk about allowances on sign based upon property length of adjacent property that some people have no control over, they have no control over whether that property is later subdivided, has been subdivided before, will be subdivided afterwards. It talks about frontage property and frontage roads, and quite frankly, we've talked a little bit on here about C1 zones and C2 zones, and I'll ask you to kind of define those here in just a minute, but I don't think, and don't be wrong, I think this was a good pass at it back when it was created. It seems at this point in time a little difficult to follow for the general public and for some of the small businesses that I know over the years have come wanting signs and/or asking about signs, or frankly, found in violation of the sign ordinance, that it was a little difficult for them to figure out where they were good and where they weren't. So, I guess I wanted to kind of at least have a discussion with the council about, since this is an ordinance, about are we good with it where it is? Do we need to make modifications, ask for modifications from the planning commission, etc.?
Well, I would kind of just like to state, I think when these ordinance were created, a lot of it was cookie-cutted from other towns and cities, and I know I've been on the planning commission for several years, and one of the things that we've tried to do over the years is go through and customize the ordinances to fit our needs. And I agree, there's a lot of holes in our, in our town ordinances and codes, and I think maybe we should send the planning commission back to review not only this one, but the entire thing, which is quite tedious, and it takes a lot of time, and it would actually probably overload Kevin's department, because I know he's super busy right now. So, I mean, if this, I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is gonna come up more often, not just on this one, but a lot of our codes and ordinances, and Kevin's done a great job, since he's been here, of catching these things, but Scott, I agree, it's kind of one of those things that, once we get into one and we find a problem, then we have to work on it then, so...
Well, you remember the sign that we dealt with a couple of years ago, and it may have been while you took your break from council, that somebody put a considerable amount of money in, and by a very slight error, was over just a little bit, but that was a significant dollar figure on that sign, and through no fault of their own, all of a sudden, here, they're in violation.
Right.
Then we had to go back and correct it, and, you know, as we look at annexations, as we look at people coming into the town, you know, we have some, and again, Kevin, this is not your fault, and I agree with Dan, you know, we've got one here that talks about freestanding signs, pole signs. Maximum signs shall be no more than 80 square feet, and one freestanding sign per 500 lumens feet of frontage, with an maximum of two freelanding signs. So, I guess I'll pick on one specific business. So, 80 square feet, essentially eight by 10. Anybody want to tell me how big the golden arches are? Because as soon as that one rolls into town, they're in violation. So, again, I get it that we may grandfather them later, but if we're looking at some of these places wanting to come to town, wanting to locate in town, it either needs to be, quite frankly, a little easier to read, or it needs to be with some waivers in there for specifics, and right now, there's really nothing built in here, and it also needs to be enforceable. We're talking about five lumens above the ambient light, but we have no ability to measure that, so...
I totally agree with what you're saying. I guess I'd ask Darla for clarification. Does the council go through these, or do we send it to planning commission first?
Well, I think you've got a couple of choices. What the statute says is that if the legislative body wants to initiate a proposal to amend an ordinance, the proposal has to be referred to the planning commission for consideration and recommendation, so then the planning commission has 60 days to hold a public hearing, so it's the reverse of what happens when, like, a rezone ordinance comes to the town council from the planning commission. So, the town council would initiate the proposal, and I interpret proposal to mean a fully drafted ordinance so that the planning commission can see specifically what the town council wants. So, you would send that to the planning commission, they have 60 days to hold a hearing, and then the planning commission decides whether or not to give it a favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation, it comes back to the council. I guess another way to do it is for one or two of the council members, or the council members can, you have two members of the planning commission here on the town council, so, I mean, if you have ideas, Dan, or Pam has ideas, for making changes, you can certainly bring it up at a planning commission meeting, or talk to Kevin about it, and have the planning commission initiate it, the changes, and then it goes through the process that it normally goes through when you have a zoning ordinance, so, either way, the town council can specifically tell the planning commission, here's what we want to change and why, or if Pam and Dan have some general ideas, they can bring it up at the next planning commission meeting, and then the planning commission can work from there.
When I see these ordinances, the thing that goes through my mind is why. Brightness, you know, we'll just pick the electronic changeable copy signs, brightness levels not to exceed. I can understand the why behind that. I agree with you, there's no measurement. Like, the next one, a minimum message will hold time of five seconds. Why? If that can't be answered, we shouldn't be legislating. It should not be in a code. Maximum sign area for wall-mounted signs, 32 square feet. Again, why? There may be good reasons for these, I'm not saying there's not, but too many, too often, ordinances for towns or stuff, if, if there's no, if the why isn't big enough, then the need to do it, that ordinance needs to go away, and...
I've been on the planning commission for 20 years, and this, there was a period of time when signs were really a big issue, and they, we went through several planners, and, you know, we had the East Alexville area plan, which made some suggestions to stick limestone signs and try to go to Monument, but then the planning commission members themselves disagreed on that, so it's an ever-evolving thing on signs, but we did spend a huge amount of time on it, but all of this was when we were in transition, in my memory, to this one-way pair, and times here have changed. The traffic alone, the count, I think, is extremely higher than it was before, so it, you know, it's appropriate to look this over and re-talk about it, and, you know, if you want to just make some pointers on what you don't like about it, but I do know that on the illuminated signs, that they were the electrical moving signs. At first, we wouldn't allow them at all, but someone put one up, we could not get them to take it down. After you make a $4,000 or $5,000 investment on a sign, you don't want to take it down, and so eventually, with the help of Dan Swafford, who was a business owner himself, it's nice to have that kind of input, because then you're seeing it from both sides, we decided to go with that, but then, you know, you don't want it to be so bright. Our measurement device may be off, but you don't want it to be so bright that it distracts high people on the road, so it's just coming up with the language and the terminology, and we haven't reviewed this sign since Kevin's been here. I don't think we haven't went all the way through it, have we?
Yeah, we did. We had to change it after the Supreme Court ruling.
On the content of the signs, yeah. So, yeah, it says it was, 2006 was the original, and then 2017, not the original, but we amended it in '06, and again in '17, so I think it's fine that we review it. You guys make some recommendations, what you like, what you don't like, and, I mean, it'll take a while to get it all ironed out, I'm sure.
I think one of the things that, you know, kind of drove me to ask for this is Frankly Kehe, and I'll pick out the other Starbucks. Not that either of them is anything wrong, in fact, I don't, I think they've been hampered by this, but one of the second and third order effects of that, if you look at Kehe, they are, for want of a better word, primarily a user of large trucks. That's how they service their business. They have very little road frontage by design, because they have a very large plant. They don't need the road frontage to go with it. don't need the road frontage to go with it, but you see large trucks, particularly when it was newly opened, wandering around in the west side of Ellisville trying to find Kehe. That's a hazard, that's a traffic hazard. They should have been allowed to put up a sign large enough that it's very clear and indicative of this is the turn to Kehe, so we don't have accidents. The state went so far as to widen the road there to make sure that we could take away the accidents, but then the town is hampering by not allowing them to put a sign big enough so we avoid the accidents. If you look at the other end of town, Starbucks, it's fairly new. Thankfully, they've come to town, not a big coffee drinker, but hey, a lot of people like it. They are on the north side of the roadway, which is great if you're going westbound, but a lot of people drink coffee in the morning and they're going eastbound. And what we've seen time and time again in the last two weeks it's been open, all of a sudden people get to, oh, there's a Starbucks, and here come the brake lights, because they haven't seen it until they got right on top of it. That's going to contribute to crashes. If they have a sign large enough, people can see it from two or three blocks out, they begin to do their lane changes and their merges in a safe manner as opposed to slamming on the brakes and deciding from the far right-hand lane, I'm going over there. And that's on the town for our sign ordinances, not giving people enough warning to be able to make those turns and to make those adjustments. So we've got to do something about that, in my mind, to alleviate some of those conditions. Clearly, we don't want something so gaudy that it creates a public safety hazard on its own, but we're creating some second and third order unintentional conflicts by this restrictive policy and the one that frankly, you just can't understand.
And I totally agree, I mean, as Sandy said, you know, I'm the one that allowed the, you know, the scrolling signs and stuff, you know, I was a business owner at the time, and signage is your key thing for business, you've got to advertise. But on the other hand, we were having the gaudy black and neon signs coming up all up and down the highway that looked like the town of Ellisville was in a total garage sale. You know, they were huge, they were everywhere. So, I mean, William made a statement about getting rid of ordinances, and you just can't get rid of ordinances because someone will take advantage of it if you do, so.
My statement, to be clear, was getting ordinances, that there's no why behind that.
Right.
So if there is a why behind that, that would not apply.
Yes, there is a why behind it, because you have to be diligent, and some of these codes were taken from other cities and other towns because we were learning, you know, we were learning on what to say and how to do things. So I agree with you 100% on what you're saying with Kehe, I've looked at that, that tower there, I, to myself, I think they could paint that, and that even shouldn't even be considered a sign, in my opinion. It should be part of just the building. But, you know, I'm just saying, ordinances, you have to have them, and like Sandy said, we have to review them all the time, but.
I just think they need to be a little easier to understand.
And I agree with you, but there were so many people trying to find loopholes that we just tightened it up because of that reason, because those signs were stuck. And I know Mike, and you remember all those black and neon letters, signs up and down that highway, and we just got the new highway put in, and Mike got rid of our telephone poles and all that, and these ugly signs were popping up everywhere. Not even advertising for businesses in Ellisville, they were for other people, you know, in Bloomington and, you know, some surrounding areas, so.
If I could.
Sure.
But when we talk about those types of signs, because I've said something.
Something like that, and I've had business owners say, hey, that's how I make my money.
Oh, and that's what I just said.
I need a sign, so we'll have to be real careful and be well-balanced, and I think this goes back to Envision Ellisville, as we try to improve the aesthetics of our town, we have to balance that with allowing business owners to.
Right.
Say, hey, here we are in a good amount of time.
Because there is sign pollution.
So it's going to take more than one meeting, that's for sure.
Exactly, and that's another point I was going to bring up. When we do go over these ordinances, we have four six-hour planning meetings, I remember, we were there forever. And it was great to get the community involved when we were on the, was it the driveways or something? When we were changing the ordinances and codes on that, we had 30, 50 people in the audience. That's great, I mean, then we get, you know, the publics feel for it, but.
Is there any way, and I know this would be more work. When you're doing this, but, I mean, to actually give some pointers to why, because otherwise, I mean, I think anything should be, any ordinance, any law should be somehow teachable to people. And just having these here, you know, maximum sign area for, you know, I'm pulling this one, maximum sign area for wall-mounted signs shall be 32 square feet and blah, 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 because of what the problem is. I mean, it doesn't have to be a big 15 paragraph thing, but just so somebody can look at that, because a lot of times, if you put something like that in there, a business person, oh, never thought of that way, that's going to make sense.
Do you remember when I do put up the flash sign on 10th and the bypass?
No.
It was huge.
It caused a lot of wrecks.
And it didn't last long, so I think that that was.
I don't know that it caused many wrecks, Dan.
I don't know that it caused wrecks, but I know it was there.
It was very distracting, I mean, it was almost blinding like bright lights kept on.
They have done studies actually for digital billboards and stuff, they are no more causing of wrecks than electronic signs and stationary signs.
Well, it wasn't there very long, and they spent hundreds of thousands on that sign.
Well, it could be because the city of Bloomington passed an ordinance, and so did Monroe County against those types of stuff.
Neither one of those applies to the university.
That's true.
Again, when you want to look at something, and all we're asking is probably it's best for the planning commission to take a pass at it first, and I know that heaps of work on all of you guys, and I don't mean to, but going back to Kehe, when you talk about a wall-mounted sign can be 24 square feet.
Right.
They've got a building that's five times that tall, that makes no sense. So again, like you said, it's paint. If I was Kehe and I really wanted to get with the program, I'd paint 35-foot letters, Kehe on the side of my building, call it that, but somebody would say that's a sign. It's not. I mean, it.
I totally agree with that.
It's just, it is, I guess, for want of a better word, it's kind of an antiquated code that we'd like to see come into the future, because it does dovetail with Envision Ellisville, it does dovetail with other things we're wanting to see, hoping to see, and when you look at certain corporations that we would really like to see here, they have a trademark-style sign that they want out front. And if our ordinance doesn't allow it, and we're going to cause them problems to be get-go, why would they even bother looking at Ellisville?
Right.
Well, and Kehe did have a temporary sign-up that was very hard to see for quite a long time. They have a nice sign-up now.
They do. Kehe has been nothing but a great partner for us so far. I'm just using them as an example of this sign ordinance, in my mind, maybe I'm the only one out here, needs to be adjusted, because when you have a building that's, what, four stories tall, three stories tall, a 24-square-foot sign is like looking at a postage stamp from the roadway.
Scott, you're not the only one, believe me.
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to put my feelings on other people here.
Here's my suggestion, and you guys take it however you want. I say give the planning commission a go at this, let them bring it back to you, and see how you guys.
I agree.
Like it. And another thing, you're always welcome, well, Darla, they can come to a meeting, can't they? It's in the audience, yeah.
It's a public meeting, they can sit in the audience.
The good news is. I talked to Dave Boyer, and Kehe's going to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and go through the motion and with no problems, and so he didn't get it in for this month's meeting, but he will for the next month's meeting.
And hopefully they will be.
So do we need a motion asking them, or is it just efficient that the council member's present?
I think it's sufficient that the council members present just.
Give their attention.
Right, ask the planning commission to review the sign ordinance.
Would it be possible to see something moving on this within 90 days?
Kevin, what does the agenda look like, the next meeting, do you know?
So far, I think we just have whatever we tabled last month, nothing news come in.
Okay, our last meeting was quite lengthy, but I think we only have one item coming back to us. So if we could put this on there, and if we don't have, it will probably take a couple goes at it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, just, how about we do this? We'd like to see some movement on this within 90 days, if not, we'll take it back and we'll work the project here and send it back to the planning commission that way, since there's two avenues. If you guys can't get to it in 90 days, then we need to effort that after that, and we'll get it back to you that way. That way, we're not just putting you in a quagmire where it's constantly bogging down and everything else you're doing.
Pam, does that sound good to you? Kevin, does that sound all right?
Sure.
Okay.
Kevin just wants to be done with the topic.
I do think it would be helpful, though, if the town council members could, at some point, you know, email your thoughts to the various planning commission members for things that need to be changed, just so there's some idea of what they should be looking at.
And the things that would stand out in my mind right now is that square. The road frontage, you'd like that corrected, and then the, some of this language that we can't monitor.
Right.
Removed or modified so that is, we have a better guideline and simplify the actual information, make it a little more understandable.
And I'd like to see some way out before it gets to BZA. I mean, they should be able to petition for a larger sign when they're building the building. Why make them build the building and then go through the hoops? Let them come in and say, look, we've got a 500,000-square-foot building, we're going to need a bigger sign, when they first propose it. And it just gets approved at the planning commission as it goes through.
Well, in all honesty, I doubt they thought about their sign.
I doubt it too, but now that we're bringing it up.
Can I say something about that? I ask, whenever they submit development plans to give us their sign ideas then, and the answer's always, we don't know. But yet they know as soon as the building goes up.
Well, but at certain points, though, we're going to involve some corporations that know exactly what their sign is, because it's world famous because of it.
I got that from Starbucks.
Right.
Was Starbucks happy with their sign?
They never said anything otherwise.
They brought some plans to you and you didn't modify it at all?
No, yeah, I mean, that's basically how it was, they had two different people join their signs completely after the fact.
Again, like I brought up, I mean, it's irrelevant because they already exist, but if we were going to entertain another McDonald's here, McDonald's corporate says this is what your sign's going to be, and they've got two or three different versions of it, to be sure.
Yeah.
But there's a preferred version, we might as well just let them put that out there whenever they're building the place ahead of time.
Yeah, and if they know that, they can come to us ahead of time and let us know.
I don't see any in the code that lets you do that.
Yeah, but they get it go, that, get it through the BZA first, I mean, that's really the only board that has it, we don't, I don't have the authority to waive things for.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I'd like you to build that into the ordinance that lets the planning commission waive it as they approve the plan.
I think state supersedes that.
Yeah, I have to, I'll talk to Kevin about that, but I think if somebody wants something like a sign, a variation that's not specifically set forth in the ordinance, they have to go before the BZA.
You can't build language in.
For the variance, so to counteract that, if you want to counteract that, you would just allow them to have a bigger sign in the first place. I mean, at some point, there's always going to be a situation.
That doesn't fit the.
That doesn't fit, and that's the whole purpose of the BZA, is to deal with those situations that don't fit the code. So either allow them a larger sign up front, or if the sign, they want a bigger sign, they're just going to have to go before the BZA. I don't think the planning commission can approve that for them. Does that make sense?
And it is extremely hard to come up with code that fits everybody.
No, I get it. So we'll let you guys take a pass at it, and we'll come back and.
Sandy, how feasible is it on that pass, though, just to give a couple of words as to the why behind it? I think that would go a lot to eliminate a lot of these people doing things against code.
Well, there's a statement of purpose at the beginning of the sign ordinance, so, and it lists several purposes, so I suppose that could be updated.
And this sign ordinance does not cover billboards, is that correct?
The other sign ordinance does.
Okay.
This is, when Sandy pulled this, because she called earlier in the week, and frankly, it was me that kind of left her with an incomplete thought when I asked her to review the sign ordinance, she's, like, there's what, six? Did you tell me, seven?
Oh, there's.
Yeah, a lot.
Probably got 100 hits when I searched.
So I just asked her to bring the business one forward.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, about the BZA, is it the problem, the fee, that?
And the hoop, I mean, honestly.
Just the process.
Yeah, if they know, if they know we're going to want a bigger sign, like Kevin says, just ask for it up front. You know, because there's things in here that, you know, requires a waiver from the town council. Okay, we know that going in, that there's a way that they get to the sign they want, as opposed to having to appeal something before they've even got their certified plan. You know, and there may be a state law that prohibits that, I get that. There just seems like there should be a way, like the one here that's, and forgive me because I'm not looking in front of it, but it's where it talks about projecting into the right-of-way requires town council approval. You sat in here ahead of time, if you're going to build that, you need this first, not, we're going to deny it, then you go to BZA to get your sign. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I mean, I'm just kind of taking all this in, what everyone's saying, and I think Sandy, Sandy nailed it, you can't make everyone happy, of course, but I just thought someone brought up the price for the fees at one time, I may be wrong on that, but.
Again, that may be a point of contention for some folks, but bluntly, for some of the major corporations that are going to have some of these signs, I don't think they're going to be worried too much.
Yeah, it's irrelevant, so.
But the publication costs come out of fee now, so.
Right. Okay, is there any other comments about review of the sign ordinance in asking the planning commission to take a look at this? Comments from the public on this? Okay. Move on now to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda? Russ, on Zoom?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for making it possible for me to be at home and commenting on this meeting. Ellisville has seen an increase in population density and traffic volume the thirty-some years I've lived here. I don't know that we're ever going to have ordinances that regulate human behavior and speed and common courtesy enough to prevent traffic incidents on 46th, specifically where Starbucks is located. You've got people of the morning crossing against traffic while they're driving into, at times, a blinding sunrise. It is just very poorly sited from a traffic standpoint. I understand why it's there and how it should, and I wish them well in their business, but Scott, I don't know that putting more signage is going to help, because you're going to have to start slowing down people going to Starbucks a block further back, which is even going to further congest other people trying to get eastbound on 46th.
Russ will be.
You realize that when all the construction is under, is completed on the developments between there and Bloomington, all the residential developments, we're going to have another 20 to 30% of new houses out there and more traffic than you ever dreamed possible, and they're all going to want to go to the same place at the same time. Folks, that's not going to work real well.
Russ, let me cut you off here just a second.
I'd like to see a definition of what is a sign. To me, a painting of a water car is not a sign.
Russ, let me cut you off here for a minute, and I'm glad you said something, but that should have been a discussion on the review of the signed ordinance when I asked for public comment, not part of the privilege of the floor, which is for business not on our normal agenda. So I'll let you continue with your thoughts tonight, but please be mindful of that in the future. This is for things not part of the normal agenda, which is privilege of the floor.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have business for the council not part of the normal agenda? Seeing none, move on to supervisor comments.
I'll start. First of all, flood report did add something to say. Andrew Miller from Chrisor Burke is coming down, I forgot to send you an email. They're coming down tomorrow, a meeting on Vine Street, we're going to do a site visit, if you will. I think they're 30% complete, maybe a little more than that, since I sent an email out to everybody about that, but at 10 o'clock tomorrow, they're going to come down, so I just thought I'd let you know they'll be in town. I hope you'd be there, and then we're going to go out on Hart Street afterwards.
Do they know about Hartford Road?
I'm sorry?
Do they know about Hartford Road?
No, I just thought we'd wait until we talked to them, and then we'd have something to report about, so.
Well, now you told us, I would want to know.
Well, hey, tell them about it.
All right, well, a little walk back, I noticed a little bit of a water runoff, of course, there's a lot of that around Ellisville, we all know. Part of Jack's Feet Creek is encroaching the edge of Hart Street Road, which is now part of the town's now, so while Mike has got this guy in town, we're going to take him up there and look at that, so. I mean, it's nothing that's in immediate danger, but it's getting close that we need to get something done, and something to look at.
It's opportune that he's coming tomorrow so he can look at it, so if we decide to act on it, he'll have a good background.
Right.
So I think that's all I have with the flood report. We're working on a project, the Parks Department, Jimmy and myself, Serena's been a lot of help, we're working on a project. on a project to replace the playground equipment at Campbell's Park. Currently, there are no, there are, there's nothing to play on if you're a kid in Elletsville unless you go to the schools. And we all have big hopes about the future of our park system in Elletsville. But me being me, I'm a little impatient about how this is progressing. And while the rest of the world spins around, I think we ought to work on this playground equipment now. And so we're working on a proposal. You don't have to say yes. If you say no, I won't have to work as hard. But we're going to work on a proposal and send it to you to not only replace Campbell's Park, park equipment, but we've been talking to Marty. We'd like to put a new array of parking or of park, playground equipment across the street from Campbell's Park as well. It'll be close to the shelter house. It can be utilized during events there. And so in addition, we're thinking about the possibility of going ahead and starting a park next to the town hall. It's in our grand plan for the trails and park system. It's part of our promotion for the next level trails. And so the proposal will be, the proposal will be costly. And I think we have funding to do it. But you'll, you'll see it at the next meeting. And, and so if you're interested, call me. I'll give you some background. That way you won't faint at the next meeting. And we're going to be real aggressive about putting some park equipment in Elletsville. So I'm pretty excited about it. So is Jimmy.
Excited, yes.
And so we hope to have a real good proposal for you. So you'll really consider it. That's all I have.
Can you tell me, is there water in like a splash park?
There's no splash park at this time. But I like water. So.
Me too.
I could be.
Maybe the one up here?
You could be convinced of that.
I could be convinced. I mean, it's just, you know, it's a whole nother level when you talk about splash parks.
It is.
And, and we, we went to all the parks in Monroe County almost, and we did visit the splash park as well. And we don't, we're not going to be able to compete with what the county and the city's done with their parks and park playground equipment. But I think we could make a splash. I shouldn't have said that. And, and, and people would take notice of this proposal.
Mike, is there a way to get a proposal with and without a splash park?
Yeah. I would prefer to give you one without a splash park at this time because it, 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 you know, and, and going back to the ARP money and other funds that might be available for quality of place, you obviously quality of place and all these grants. And that's when that, that's when we could really take off. But all that aside, I think we ought to take some of the money that we've, what, I don't know, I've lost the train of thought as far as, but the money that we have saved and kept in our coffers over the last 10 years, I think maybe we ought to just spend some of that right now. So. So it might be controversial, but it's coming your way.
We'll look forward to that next time. Anything else?
I just wanted to clear you on some things. The, if you see some larger than normal equipment down on the trail and on the parking lot, Casti Electric has now started installing the new lights. There'll be eight new lights along the trail and two larger lights out on the parking area. And Mike mentioned it just a second ago, but I want to, I want to commend her also, Serena Pettyjohn and also Sandy for allowing her to, to help us. We'd have these meetings and before we go, it'd be, okay, Serena, we need you to do this and this. And we go, and so, and she jumped right on it. So we're just really pleased to have her. But I want to clear you on the fact that the lights will be up on the, he's saying within a couple of weeks, lights should be ready to go down the trail and the parking lot. So, and like Mike said, I'm really excited about this playground equipment. We went around to look at all of it in Monroe County. I was down at Bloomfield the other day to look some of the stuff they had down there, which is very similar to what we're looking at. But it's like I say, it's going to be a big splash. It'll be great for us. So especially with the trail system goes through. I'm excited. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, can you give us a quick update on what's going on out here?
Well, not much. It's rained. So we do have the property cleared and we've removed all the stumps and we had a machine in here that could literally take a 12 inch tree and just eat it up. So we've cleaned it all up. It's ready for site preparation. Unfortunately, I've been so busy that doing a site plan where we could go ahead and, and start doing the work that the town can do on its own, and that would be prepping the site. I can't do that until I have a plan and I can't get a plan until I find an architect and, and then get a request for a proposal. So no offense, but I've kind of been stymied on that. And, and so we may not do anything there for a month or two. So.
Other supervisor comments?
I just got a couple, maybe a record. I went 95 minutes without speaking a word. And you, you record for me. No, you go see, I'm going to be sending you all an email in the next two weeks about some items I think are very important at the wastewater plant. We're going on 25 years pretty soon. So it's been there for a while. Some of the equipment we have is antiquated. The technology is antiquated. UV system, I think we spend like $50,000 a year just putting bulbs and bousched in it because it's so old. SCADA system is really old. As you, I can imagine your phones change every six to nine months. That, that technology, we're still on the original SCADA, which is systems control and data acquisition. That's what SCADA stands for. I think that those are important. The oxidation ditch is using very crude, I guess is a, a word you could use, system of oxidizing or ox, the oxidation in the oxidation ditch, adding air to it. We spend somewhere between 10 and $14,000 a month just on electricity to run that operation. So been looking into that technology. And then the overall aesthetics down there, we haven't had any new blacktop for 25 years. The buildings all need to be repainted. The, the inner structures that are metal need to be sandblasted and painted. And new coatings for all the tanks. We would like for this plant to last 25 more years. So the people beyond us will can look back and say, somebody really took care of this place. So we're going to have to put a dump station down there because when we vacate the current one for the septic haulers, we think it belongs down there anyway. We need to put in some automatic gates, the way to track them, who's dumping and how much. So we can control that better as well. So there's, there's a, a lot of items that, you know, we need, they need addressed in the next. This was going to happen this time last year, actually before when COVID hit. So it's kind of been on a back burner, if you will. So I'll be coming to you with those kind of things. Hopefully someday we'll get an agreement with Eastern Richland and we can move forward on some of these items. So.
And we are looking at ARP and state.
For some of these to mitigate the impact on the rate payers.
Though I was told today that already over $600 million worth of projects have been submitted for the $50 million that the state is going to get. So trying to get, wiggle your way in there to get any of that money might be tough. So.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Other supervisor comments? Council comments? I would like to ask if the council would be willing to have a work session after the next meeting, which is June the 28th, with the purpose of discussing annexations and discussing several other items of town business related to that.
So you're saying after the June meeting?
The June, the June 28th meeting.
We'll adjourn and then have a work session.
Take a quick break and then we'll have a work session.
And I apologize, Scott. I forgot to get ahold of Sandy about that. Glad you brought it up because I.
I almost didn't remember.
You would prefer that instead of having a separate work session next weekend?
Yeah, I would if, if you guys are okay with that. Because I think that, being that this is summer, that's going to be.
I'm tentatively, I want to be there, but that is also the, the first day of the fair is, so the plan, I was planning to leave here to go back to the fair.
Okay.
So I'm not sure.
Well, hopefully we won't be this late with the next meeting.
That, a lot of that will depend.
So are we okay to at least tentatively put it out there?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
I'm good. All right. So we would encourage the public to attend that and/or make arrangements to give us your feelings on this. Other council comments?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
August 31st visit by the governor. I suppose it'll be well attended. So it'd be great to have some board members there. And so if you need any, okay. So if you need any help trying to figure out where to sit or whatever, call me and I'll try to arrange something for you. And it's going to be, it's going to be quite the event.
Where is it at again?
It's going to be town hall. As far as I know now, Jill?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it's going to be in town hall.
Darla, just to clarify, since there may be a quorum present and it's in town hall, do we need to publish that?
I don't think so because that, I'll, I'll double check the statute, but that just counts as a, a chance meeting.
Okay.
You're not, as long as you're not discussing town business.
Okay.
It's an event for the town. So.
Just checking to be sure.
I will double check, but I don't think that's a problem.
Let's go around for the council. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.